We'll open the meeting for Tuesday, January 21st. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be approved.
So moved.
Liquor control's already been moved up, so do you see a reason to move anything else?
Do we have anybody here that's...
Well, the sun presentation is already at seven and liquor control's at six, so...
Okay.
We don't really have a bunch of people for other stuff.
Okay, good enough.
All right, so all in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Contain a motion to accept the minutes of January 7th as may be amended.
So moved.
Minutes, minutes, minutes. I didn't have it, I mean, I read all this online, but I don't, I didn't have anything in the minutes.
Yeah, I didn't have any either.
Okay. Did you guys have anything?
No.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes of January 7th, please say aye.
Aye.
I have a question under select board concerns, which we actually have an answer to. My question has to do with the fact that there's no sign on the new public safety building.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chet.
Well, I contacted them today and they had already finished the signed design. It's being, the printers being made tomorrow, they'll have it on site either Thursday or Friday.
So what kind of sign is that?
It's a four foot by eight foot, basically like plywood, but it'll have a metal coating on it, so it's not gonna, it'll weather well.
Okay.
So, that's the sign that's going up there.
So people will know it's going up there now?
Yep.
Four by eight will be big enough to read on your way by.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So that's the sign that's going.
Okay.
I don't have a concern, I'd just like to reach out and say thanks to the highway guys, they were out last Sunday, I think it was, filling in that gap on Killington Road. It was right before the speed sign.
The speed sign, yeah.
And it was a long one.
Yeah.
You know, so just saying...
But it's already gone.
That fill is already out?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as, as soon as you get these temperatures, you get, it just moves that quickly and we'll have to refill it again.
I'm thanking them, because I saw them out there Sunday.
I saw them out there and it was completed, yeah.
All right.
Anything? Okay. Good evening. Do any of you have anything that is not already on the agenda that you want to bring up? Okay.
Well, I just...
Well?
...public safety building.
Yep.
How's the spending going?
Well, we're gonna...
That's on, that's in here, right?
That's it, that's on the department, that's in their manager's report.
Okay.
We'll bring that up.
And it's also a public safety update, well, yeah.
Okay, then I'll go away.
All right, thank you. Thank you all. So, number six, we have board of liquor control, what do we have this evening?
So we have an outside consumption permit for Killington Hospitality Group, which is the former Anna de Six Mountains, which is now the Killington Hospitality. Just a little explanation, the outside consumption permit was always part of their first class license. DLC changed the rules about two years back, and they made it so that when you renew your first class, you no longer automatically renew your outside consumption, so you have to renew it separately and have to pay for it. So they didn't realize that the rules had changed and that they had lost their outside consumption permit, so they are reapplying to that. And it's the same area, which is basically the courtyard area...
It's the same area that's been approved for...
That's been approved before.
This is the area that overlooks the golf course?
Yes.
In the back?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the outside consumption permit for, what was the name?
The Killington Hospitality Group.
The Killington Hospitality Group.
Okay.
And then, for the same property...
One sec. Well, he made a motion to approve...
I made a motion to, for the outside, for the outside consumption permit, so...
Do you have anything? No? All in favor of the...
Outside consumption permit for Killington Hospitality?
Motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And for the same property, we have a brand-new first class, third class. The outside consumption permit will be coming later, but this property is in the process of being transferred, and the new owners are applying for the liquor license ahead of the closing, which they're hoping will be sometime around March 1st. And they have submitted the application, which I've gone through and it's complete. They have also submitted a corporate, cooperation information with the Secretary of State, a certificate of authority, certificate of liability insurance. They also have a lease, because it's similar to the mountain inn where the owner and the less see, the owner but the...
The owner and the less see are the same.
Right. But we also have a letter from Killington Hospitality indicating that they are the holder of the current license, and they have entered into an agreement to sell the lodge to an affiliate of NCI Killington and LLC, and they are aware and will approve the application for the license.
So my only question on that, Lepesha, is one address can only have a liquor license, is what I was always under the impression.
That is...
So currently, right now, there is the one company that's in there, and then when the other company comes in and purchases it, so we can make, I have no problem making a motion to let the town clerk move forward when the actual sale goes through.
Actually, this will be sent up tomorrow. DLC will not issue a license until the other license is surrendered. And I know this because it's happened before.
Okay.
And they will not physically give me the license to give to the DLC without that license being surrendered.
Right, okay.
So there's no...
So, so my motion will be that we let the town clerk move forward with it, with the conditions that the closing actually happens and...
And he'll sign this one.
Yeah, because it's a brand-new one, okay?
Now, but will the state notify you when this transfer happens?
Uh, no, they won't notify me. We will know about the transfer because we get the records to the court.
Before the state, you'll know...
But more than likely, they will be looking for the license, and I will be contacting the DLC to find out where it is, and they'll be telling me, well, they told me to do this, and I'll be getting in touch with them to say...
My question was just if this happens on a Friday and you're not going to get the paperwork for them to have the permit, and all of a sudden they don't have a liquor license for the weekend, and we're trying, we're trying to avoid that on our...
When do we think the closing's happening?
Uh, most likely mid-March.
Okay.
But we can structure it on a Tuesday or Wednesday to prevent a scenario like that from happening.
Okay, yeah, because we, we don't want you to have to shut down for three days while you're waiting for a piece of paper to come in if it's already been issued.
Yeah, we've been, I, in things like that, I'm always watching now when I...
Okay.
And we should know probably thirty days' time when the official...
Right. So I, I mean, I'm making a motion to move forward with this and signing it, based on the fact that we all understand that, you know, you're not getting the liquor license right away, it has to have a closing first, that's it.
Right.
You know, I think you're okay with that.
Put all the papers in front.
Right.
All in favor of Jim's motion to move ahead with the liquor license, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move, while we're signing this, we'll move on to the next one, so that solar presentation can do their setup while we're signing.
It gives a lot of setup.
Well, that's okay.
Thanks to Chet.
No, of course not.
Where would you like me to present from?
Just wherever you're comfortable.
Without blocking the screen.
Just go to you.
I'll stand over here so I can see everybody.
Okay.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. My name's Mike McCarthy, I'm the head of the commercial and community solar team at Sun Common, I'm here with my colleague Kerry Finn, and we've been discussing over the last couple of months some opportunities for solar, carport canopies, and battery storage here in the town of Killington. So I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about each one of those opportunities, with the focus being on the rooftop projects that we've been discussing with Chet for potentially the town garage and your new public safety building. So Chet, Phil, advance the slide for me. So just really briefly, if you're not familiar with us at Sun Common, we're a mission-driven solar company and believe that everyone has a right to a healthy environment and brighter future, and that renewable energy is where that starts. We are helping Vermont businesses, schools, and thousands and thousands of homes change their relationship with the energy that they get, repowering their lives with not only solar, but also battery storage and EV charging, and it has been really fun to be working at Sun Common for the last seven years. So I've been there almost since it was about a year old, and now we've helped over 5,000 Vermont homes go solar. And with our new location in the last couple of years in the Hudson Valley, New York, we've also expanded deep into the Hudson Valley to help more people go solar. Some examples of projects that we've done to give you a visual on what I'm going to be talking about here in Killington. The picture on the left is the St. Almonds Town Education Center of where I live in St. Almonds. That's a 2,000 module project that's generating about $110,000 a year worth of power for the school districts. About 80% of it goes to the school there, and then we're sharing 20% with one of the accounts down the street at the high school, but it's saving them under a 10% guaranteed discount model, they put no money upfront, and they're saving about $11,000 a year on their power bills with that 10% discount model. And I'm going to be talking about that kind of no upfront cost, third-party investment model for your two big projects in just a second. So that kind of pitch roof install is the type of install that we would do on the town garage. To the right, you'll see a ballasted flat roof install over a membrane. We, I would say something like two-thirds of the commercial installs that we do now are ballasted systems on a membrane, because a lot of the big wide-open roofs in Vermont are flat roofs, and that allows us to do an install where the racking has rubber feet, it sits on the membrane, there is little or no need of any kind of penetration through the membrane that would cause water to be able to get where we don't want it to go. And the public safety building, I think, has been designed to have an extra between five and 10 pounds per square foot of structural capacity to accommodate that kind of loading. And then below is a big steel canopy that we did at the Alchemist Brewery a little over a year ago, and that's a good example of a large carport that we've done. So I know that you've been down the road of pursuing ground-mounted solar projects and had other kinds of solar presentations in the past, so you're probably familiar, but for the public who's here, folks, Vermont's one of about 26 states now, I think, that allows businesses or municipalities or homeowners to put up their own energy generation and then get credits for that generation from the utility. States have a lot of different models. Vermont's model basically has the utility approve a project through the Public Utility Commission, and then you get 20 years where the utility will give you a certain amount of credit per unit of power that you generated, that you can use in the winter and in the times when you're not generating so much. So the credits are good for a year. Next slide, please. Your usage here in the town of Killington, I tried to sum up, you have many, many, many small bills for pump stations and sewer, I tried to ignore some of the smaller accounts and just focus on the bigger ones, where you've got a lot of usage charges. So to give you a sense of the scale, this doesn't include everything, but your biggest utility bills that I've seen to date are the maintenance building at the golf course, the town garage, the town office, the library, and the usage charges on your lights. So I backed out all of the, there's sort of some capital lease stuff going on that you've worked out with Green Mountain Power, back that stuff out, and there's about $900 a month of actual usage charges that we can offset with solar. So if you extrapolate all the stuff I've seen roughly in the bills out to annual estimates, you're spending somewhere between, I think, total 45 and maybe $50,000 a year in usage charges. Now, your customer service charges, energy efficiency, are going to add a little bit more to your total electricity budget as a town, but what we could offset with solar is probably pushing upwards of $50,000. So conservatively, I said, okay, there's at least $42,000 worth of existing Green Mountain Power bill that we could try to offset with some solar. Everybody with me? All right, great. So a couple of obvious sites when we look at all the buildings that the town owns, where could we pull a solar project where it wouldn't have aesthetic concerns, where the structure could probably handle it, and we would be able to get a big enough project that a third-party investor would be interested in putting up the upfront capital, so that you as a municipality don't have to. Full disclosure, I'm a city official in the city of St. Almonds, I'm on the city council, I also represent St. Almonds in the legislature, I was at that job most of the day today, so after listening to the budget address and everything, I've got money on my mind. 140 kilowatt system is probably what we could fit at the town garage, that would be 380 solar panels or modules. A system that size, factoring in snow in the winter and orientation of the building not being totally ideal for solar, but it's got kind of a west-southwest pitch, almost flat, is going to generate somewhere around $23,000 to $25,000 a year. So I think $23,500 per year, given for this next year's rates, and we're not power for solar, assuming we apply for a permit before they change the rates again, which will probably happen very shortly, in the next few months. With our 10% discount model, there'd be no upfront costing municipality, and on this first project, that 10% guaranteed annual discount on the credits that you receive would net you a savings of about $2,350, so...
What would that system cost?
If you just, if you did just pay for it out of pocket, it would be about $315,000, I think, it was like $314,900 something, my copy later.
Okay.
So where would this third party come from that might be investing in it?
That's a great question. I have a feeling, so we have a variety of different investors that we partner with on our community and school projects. There's one big firm that's called Kendall Sustainable Infrastructure, they might be a likely partner, although because they're out of state, the, some of the in-state tax advantages that are available for solar at this scale wouldn't be, they wouldn't be eligible for. They're kind of a big firm that invests in renewable energy all around the Northeast and have invested in something like two dozen community projects with us. More likely, I think, is that either internally we would buy these projects, or one of our sort of partner investors that's actually invested in Sun Common that has taxed up this year. So we have a couple of private individual Vermont business owners that are invested in Sun Common that I think might be interested in putting up the capital, but really Sun Common would be operating it, they'd just be like the bank. So they would own the project on paper, but the operating entity would remain Sun Common. So you wouldn't have to have a direct relationship with the third-party investor. Their real motivation is they want the tax credit, and they want the reliable cash flow from you buying power from them instead of paying Green Mountain Power as much, but they guarantee you that discount.
And then one of the pieces of this is, is the reason for that for municipalities, we can't take advantage of the tax breaks?
Right.
But they have the same five- and 10-year model where we can buy this at a dramatically discounted price after we've, they've taken advantage, so we can technically get it, take advantage of the tax credits, even though they're not directly ours.
So it's just, the $23,500, that's actual electric?
That's what you would see, depending on the weather that year.
Electric, but, right.
And credits on...
But if we use, you said something earlier, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. If we had a bill for $23,500 in electric, let's just say for one month, boom, it's one month, right? Then on top of that is the other add-ons, correct? Because you don't get charged in solar for the add-ons. So like the energy efficiency, so like when I get my electric bill, it will tell me that's 13 and a half cents, and then there's another two cents or whatever on top of that. When you're producing your own energy, you're not being charged the two cents.
Yeah, there's, so there, you're right, there would be a little bit of additional savings beyond the discount fees.
Correct.
Because you would only get the efficiency charge per kilowatt hour charged for the net consumption in those months, actually, right?
Right.
So there would be some additional net savings to you because some of those extra charges, like...
Right, because it would be like 13 and a half cents, and then it comes out to be like 15 and whatever.
Yeah, so the value might actually be more like $2,600 a year or something like that.
Right, okay.
And then, if you'll advance the slides, please, Chet. So site two, could actually be bigger than this, I just found out at the beginning of the meeting. So originally, we were thinking we would only be able to use one section of the building, but it looks like the whole building is going to be able to have the kind of structural capacity to handle solar. We may actually be able to do something closer to the size of the...
The ground.
...town garage building. So it could just be that they're very similar in size, but here we modeled doing something more like half that size at 60 kilowatts, just using the sort of southeast section of the new public safety building. And so that'd be 164 modules, a little over $10,000 a year in utility offsets, credited to your bills, and again, with that 10% discount model that we use with our third-party projects, you'd have a net savings of $1,000 from that project.
And what would that system cost?
So 60 kilowatt system ballasted like that, doing the math really quickly...
Ballpark, would not...
Yeah, it'd be something like, what would you get on that? $160,000. $160,000.
So if they were, they would basically be able to double it if they're using the bays as well.
Right, I just, I got the system here.
Yeah.
So this building's not built yet, okay? Usually with solar, when you do roofs or whatever, sometimes you can, if I was doing it on my house or whatever, they would work the roof into the cost of the solar?
No, actually, you can't.
No? They used to did.
Yeah, so for the purpose of...
Not, maybe not for a new bill, but for, they were doing it a year or two ago.
There are some companies that combine doing a new roof with the solar...
We don't.
But the roof isn't eligible for the tax credits, and we partner with roofers all the time to do a new roof and then put in the solar, but we keep the two things separate.
Okay. You know where I was going.
Yeah, absolutely. But especially on these third-party owned projects...
I would look for someone to pay for a firehouse roof, that's all.
I wish we could do that. I can save you some money with solar with no upfront costs, I will not be able to pay for all of your roofing you need.
Yeah, okay, and actually, the roof is designed, was, because we knew that this was a potential eventuality, we have the penetrations, we're putting the, the structure on the roof to calculate it, and also it's been included in the structural design.
Right.
So it's, it's ready for this, so actually, sometime in April, they'll be putting the roof on, or end of March, beginning of April. So sometime in that time, we might be getting involved there.
Next slide, please. So if you want to advance through these, I, I'm kind of meant for them to just pop up, sorry about that.
It's okay.
So with the third-party ownership, there's not any upfront costs to the municipality. So what we're, we're really looking for is the host site where we can put the building. There's a lot of due diligence that goes into that, that risk is on us, so we'll do the structural on the town garage, you know, if we could find that that building can't accommodate any more solar, then we would just do the public safety building, for instance. So we've got some work to do, Sun Common will take on that risk if you decide that you do want to move forward with this kind of model. But our goal here was to give you the opportunity to do the solar projects without having to consider doing fire or something like that.
So I have, I have a question, did we look at the golf course buildings itself?
We're not there yet, we, we talked about it, we haven't gotten them out there yet.
Okay, and then, have you gone to the sites and actually done the sighting and the searching where you put in the correct zip code?
We, we asked about the sites, I've been using more aerial photography to help us do modeling rather than, did you have a previous solar person who was looking at a different town or...
No, it was on the state.
They, they gave us the annual output, but the zip code was for central New Jersey.
Yeah, so my, I'm based in Vermont, I only personally do solar in Vermont, tiny bit in upstate New York.
Yeah, okay.
So my, all my weather modeling and everything is for...
We got a piece of paper and then it had a zip code on it, and I looked up the zip code, well, I know, it had the longitude and latitude, and I looked that up and it was in New Jersey.
I mean, I will say that, you know, in New Jersey, you're going to get some more winter production than we get here.
Yeah, summer.
Less snow and all that stuff, but it actually, it probably wasn't more than 15 or 20% off, but those are real numbers. So these numbers are, I, I think, realistic, in fact, they're in the fact that these aren't like perfectly south-facing roofs, obviously flat roofs, ballasted, that takes a little bit of the efficiency off, but we can still generate enough power to obviously offset a significant amount of your costs. And we've got a big enough fleet of panels in Vermont that our modeling has gotten better and better every year, and I've been doing commercial systems like this for, since really the summer of 2014, we've been doing big systems. So I've had a few years of data under my belt now, where I feel pretty confident about these numbers. So if you did both of these buildings the way I sized them up originally, there would be, you know, somewhere in the $3,500 a year, a little bit less net savings. I think if we can increase the size of the public safety solar, we might be looking at more like a $4,500 or a $5,000 a year net savings. Obviously, we're not going to build more solar than you can really use, so as we think about going bigger, I would work with Chet to make sure that we're modeling everything in a way that makes sense. But the idea would be that, you know, over the course of 20 years, with no upfront costs, you'd have somewhere north of $75,000 with the systems of their original size, we can get it up into the $100,000 plus range, more the better. That's if you just stick with the 10% discount for the life of the system. The other opportunity, which Chet already mentioned, which more and more people are starting to look at when we consider these third-party projects, is that we can build into the contract at year seven, once the investor has had the opportunity to reproof all of, or has gotten past the reproof period for the tax credits. So they have to own it for at least five years in order to keep the tax credits. You would have the opportunity, not the obligation, but the municipality could, at a fair market value, which we estimate to be about 60% of the original project cost. So if you think about like that $300,000 solar today, you know, if we go...
Let me get this straight, so a solar panel system that costs $160,000, and I'm installing it, and I get a 22% federal tax credit first, right off the bat, within two years, and then I'm going to get the depreciation for seven years of that system, which is probably 50 to 60% depreciation, and then they're going to sell it back to me for 60%? I mean, I would, I would just hope I would get a better deal than that, to be honest with you.
You won't find the third-party investor that'll take all the capital expense on in the beginning and, and offer even better than a 60% fair market buyout for projects this size. If you had like a megawatt or two megawatts, and they could do a bigger project, then we might be able to, to talk about better numbers. To offer this in Vermont with the rates right now and the declining value of the tax credits, we're threading a needle...
Okay.
...right now, but we've tried to offer the best deal that we can, so that it's an easy decision for decision-makers like you and...
So if we didn't buy it, we just continue the same way it was?
Well, I mean, the one thing that we were really against, and, and our community was against, was trackers going up and down this Killington row, this river road.
River road, right.
The up and down this river road, and we had asked, why can't we just put them on top of the roofs to that provider? We were told it really wouldn't produce much electricity. I'm sure you have this, say, every solar panel, you're giving some kind of guarantee in here or whatever, what the producer, you're within 10 or 15% of what you're saying here, hopefully, you know, the lower end.
For them, they're, they're probably not wrong. The efficiency of these panels in place...
Right.
...is not going to be as great as trackers on the ground.
Right.
And I think the biggest difference between us, especially if they were from out of state, is that our in-state investor, and we have half a dozen of them that have bought a project or two from us like this...
Yeah.
...they have the ability to take advantage of not just the federal tax credit, but also state, and that, and they are more comfortable at the scale of buying three, four, 100,000, a million dollar projects, instead of saying, I'm not going to do this unless I have a portfolio of projects that's worth $50 million.
Yeah.
And so most of like the big national players in solar, they don't want to buy a half-million-dollar solar project at a time and do all the legal on paper for that, they want to buy these huge portfolios, and, you know, we're a Vermont-sized company, we, this is the scale that we work at, and this is sort of Vermont scale.
Right.
So we've got partners that will finance projects that are relatively small on a national scale. scale, like these projects, so it's a little different.
So, yeah, but what I was getting at was, is that we were actually interested with the last, if they could be on rooftops.
If they could get them away from where they proposed location.
I mean, there are some people in the audience that were here for around that, so, you know, is that, was that the true feeling that we were getting from the public? It's just that we didn't want them on the ground when you're coming through, but up on top of the roof, you're really not gonna see them unless you're six hundred yards in the woods looking at somebody, so, you know.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, is if we know the seven year is the sixty percent, but, you know, you can, we, we talked about the possibility of having a seven-year option and a fifteen-year option, where then the, the cost drops that much more, because then if, if you're fifty percent of what you were at year seven, you know, now you're down in a much smaller number, and you may, you may be actually doing maybe two, three years' worth of solar, and you buy it and you're not paying anymore.
All right. No, no, and, and that's why I brought up the fact of the, the, the trackers, you know, we were not interested at all in trackers. The community spoke and said, not down river road, not down really Eddie Road.
Well, and I-
But, but-
I don't do ground mounts for that exact reason, they're, you know, the Vermont side of people want-
But so, so to me, i- it just comes back to that we have to have a discussion here is like, you know, this ten percent or whatever for thirty-five-hundred dollars or whatever, you know, I, I look at it and say, the first system, twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred per year, if it is two cents above the thirteen-and-a-half cents, I think that's what it is, all those like extra add-ons or whatever, that's about fifteen percent just difference right there. So the payback at twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred is thirteen-point-four years, okay, for a three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar system, all right? But at fifteen percent, so then that's gonna take that down. So the payback is about ten to eleven years on that system, if you count it in, if we bought it straight out. And there's no difference between paying Green Mountain Power or paying the other place. The only difference is, is that, you know, we have to do a figuring here, is that, you know, if you go seven years of just taking the ten percent discount, does that actually make your payback longer later on? You follow all that?
Well, yes, yeah, and, and the real question comes down to, because you're getting a discount at least, we'd have to do that math and see how that actually works.
Right, but I, I don't have a problem, I, I don't have a problem, I mean, this is a presentation of like looking into this a little bit further, of saying buying the system straight out instead of, I, I don't have a problem, that's should be a discussion. And I think, yeah, 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 but I think the other thing is, is that we're, we're getting away from trackers.
Right.
And it's-
Well, and we're getting them away from the road, too.
We're getting away from the, well, yeah, trackers on the road or whatever. So I, I mean, I love the presentation, but I think this is something that we should be talking not out of, you know-
Well, I think, and the goal of, the goal of, of going through this, and we're not done with the presentation yet.
Oh, okay.
I have, I have a couple of things that Chad asked me to add on.
Right, these, we want, things we want to look at, but the, the, one of the things that, that, you know, because they sent me the copies of the leases and things like that, and before we started any review, do we want to move to the next step where we actually start to say, we are in favor of this concept, and do we want to get the, the garage looked at to make sure it'll handle it structurally, and we can actually come up with real numbers? And I think that's the next step.
I think I already gave my two cents that I'm interested in.
Yeah, and, and that's really what the goal of this was, and then we will move to the next step, and then when we have hard numbers, we would then come back with the final-
I would just like to see you go to the, the golf course, check that out, and then I'd also like to see the town manager talk to the principal or at the school and get the SU. They wouldn't be able to put the money up, but for them to save ten percent on that building over there would be huge for, for a budget over there.
And they have the roof area.
And they have the roofing, so it all depends on how the-
And the building was built in seventy-five, seventy-six? And it's all trusses?
It's all, it's trusses?
I believe it's trusses, it's not rafter, so.
A lot of flat roofs in Vermont.
No, this is, this is a pitch roof, like a four, this is like-
I went to one of those schools up in the, at the city.
It's like a four, it's like a four and twelve roof.
Yeah.
It's a little more.
It's a three B five?
Once again, I was just like, when you're coming in to do, I would like you to just, you know, have a visit over there and see what you think it would do, because what they're paying for electricity, they can't afford to, to buy the system, but if they can save ten percent, that would be huge.
Yeah, no, we'd love to take on another project if the building will work.
Yeah, so, so if you can just follow through with that.
Yep.
Perfect, so a couple of ideas that Chad asked me to give you some numbers on. We have a pretty unique solar canopy product, and the opportunity to pair canopies with EV charging and, and finance those doesn't fit in our sort of discount model with the larger systems, but you've got a couple of sites where I think as more and more of us are driving electric vehicles, I'm sure folks here in Killington could use a, a spot to charge while they're here at your lovely library. This is a timber frame canopy that is a custom product that we developed. The one on the bottom is sort of the latest and greatest version of the canopy, that's a single bay, so it's about two car spaces wide. The one up top is a dual bay, four car spaces wide canopy, that's at the Hunger Mountain Co-op. So what I am gonna give you numbers on in the next slide here, if you'll advance to that, Chad, is what it would take to do a dual bay canopy here. So if you look at the picture I put there, basically you could park four cars, it's about, you know, it's closer to five car spaces wide with the pillars in the middle, but if you do a dual bay canopy, it's sixteen-point-eight kilowatts. So, you know, about one-tenth the size of the town garage solar that we were talking about. You know, a place folks can park under, keeps the snow off the cars, put in a location like that, the, any snowshed that would come off of it would go onto the grass, so that would work out pretty well. And it's not too long a distance to where your existing utility meter and hookup is, so the pink line represents kind of the, you know, approximate path of where we have to get the trench to. So if you'll advance to the next slide, Chad. So I put together a proposal for this system, which, to, to get to your point, Jim, about, I can do something like this for the bigger ones, too, to show you all the numbers, but doing this size system, a dual bay canopy with a, a couple of non-networks of just regular level two, two-hundred-and-forty-volt EV chargers, would be about eighty-two-thousand-five-hundred. And so, you know, with the amount of power that you generate from that, would have something like a twenty-three-year payback. So obviously, this is not the kind of savings that you get with a big rooftop system, but it gets you the electric vehicle charging, and a system that roughly cash flows even, so that the solar generation pays roughly for the canopy, when you look at it with the kind of financing that you'd probably be eligible for with the state infrastructure bank, the CIB program. So they've just authorized more money for electric vehicle infrastructure as a municipality that would qualify you and rank you pretty high for that financing mechanism. VITA manages that federal state infrastructure bank money, and with one percent loan rates, you can get really good cash flow on projects like this, so. The, it would be a beautiful timber frame canopy, so not the trackers, but would be sort of an advertisement of your solar and an opportunity to house electric vehicle charging, sort of welcome folks to plug in. I actually drove, Karen and I came down in a Chevy Bolt EV this evening, and I'm gonna be stopping at a fast charger on the way home. I would need to do that, if there had been a charger here, I would just plug in while we were having this meeting, and I'd be off on my way, so as the infrastructure changes.
Is there a lifetime on these panels? Because if we're gonna put them in for twenty, thirty years, are we gonna have to replace them in fifteen, twenty years?
That is a great question. So all of the panels that we're using today come with a twenty-five-year production guarantee from the manufacturer. Now, in Vermont conditions, we don't have the highest production efficiency here, but that also means that the degradation of the panels themselves is a lot sort of shallower or slower. So most of our modules on a structure like this, you could be using the same modules in place for forty, fifty years potentially. The one piece that we need to be replaced on a system like this would just be the inverter, so there'll be, you know, this kind of box that sits either on the wall over here, or on one of the pillars of the canopy, that takes the DC power and converts it to the AC power that we tend to use. And, you know, that would probably, on a system like this, be in year fifteen, something like a twenty-five-hundred or three-thousand-dollar piece of maintenance.
So, and they're bifacial?
Yeah, these are bifacial.
Which means that you get reflecting, reflecting like in the winter, the, the bottom of the panel is also generating underneath the canopy, so when you have the reflection from the snow and stuff, you're getting-
So, so like the electricity earnings on the right-hand side, top, year one is thirty-five-hundred, year five is seventeen-five, which is five times the thirty-five-hundred?
Oh, it's the cumulative over time.
Okay, but, so, so Steve's question was, is, and Steve's question was, how long do they last or whatever? And you said they're guaranteed for a net production for twenty-five years. What's the slope of that net production decreasing each time? Because in, in this thing here, you're really not showing, at least in the first five years, twenty-three times thirty-five-hundred is eighty-thousand-five-hundred, but you've increased it.
Right, because that's because the utility rates are gonna go up. So if the base utility rate goes up-
Okay, yeah, so you're taking into, okay, so you have some kind of utility rate going up, but what is, what is, what is the, what's, what's the acceleration of the?
Degradation.
Degradation. So year one is a hundred percent, let's say. What's year two?
The manufacturer's guarantee no more than about half a percent, so I think in this case, it's, these bifacials, it's actually more like up point four or five percent, so it's actually less on the guarantee, but let's call it half a percent for easy numbers.
Right.
And so that means that year twenty, you're getting ninety percent of what you got year one, which is the manufacturer guarantee.
Right.
So you go out to year twenty-five, and you're looking at like eighty-seven percent, and then you go out to year thirty, and you're looking at, you know, maybe, you know, it's eighty percent at year thirty, once you've gotten the cost of production guarantee, there are very few things in life you can buy that'll be doing eighty percent of what they did day one at year thirty. So that's the, there will be that sort of linear loss.
Right. But at the same time, you're picturing that there's a gain in the price per kilowatt-hour.
Yeah, so if you're looking at a half a percent per year decrease in the production efficiency, the total output, what you're looking at an average historically of about three percent in utility increases, this model is two and a half, just to be conservative.
Right.
Like the, you know, GMPs had two roughly five percent increases, but in the three years before that, they had almost no increase, and they had a six-month period where they had a small decrease. So when you average all that out, it's about a three percent.
So I, I mean, I'm gonna go on with another question on this, and I'm really looking at the rooftops or whatever, because the library is a separate entity or whatever, and I truthfully don't see any difference between a tracker on the library and a, a structure that's six feet, you know? I don't think the people were concerned about the metal pipe, I think it was looking at the solar panel itself right there. If it's up on the roof, you're not gonna see it, that's why I said you would be far away, and there was a few shakes in the audience. So, but if after twenty-five years, and it's, the net production's supposed to be eighty percent, but it's coming in at, let's say, seventy percent, what is the, what's the guarantee?
So after year twenty-five, there is no guarantee.
Okay, so after ten, let's say year ten.
Yeah, so in year ten, if you're getting-
Eighty percent.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're getting eighty percent, it's supposed to be ninety-five, the value of that fifteen percent difference, the manufacturer will, of the panels, will pay you, and I think in this case, it's LG, so like, you know, it's huge. We've used a couple of different manufacturers with bifacials, but right now-
So they'll be reimbursing you the difference of that.
Yeah, the-
Each year, and even though, and every single year they would be doing that?
Yeah, it's an annual-
Not take out those and put new ones in?
Yeah, the guarantees vary a little bit from module manufacturer to manufacturer, but the idea is that it's, it's an annual thing. So if you, you get out to the, the end of that time period, and you've got your utility bills documented, you just send that to them, and they cut you a check for the rest.
Right, okay.
Now, I'll tell you, these panels in Vermont don't lose half a percent per year, so the, the upside of us having relatively snowy-
And you'll be here in thirty years to back that up, right?
I don't know. We've been here eight and we're growing like crazy, so I have no-
Yeah.
I have no doubt that we will continue to be doing this for at least a couple decades.
I think you got at least two guys here that have done construction and have seen enough lifetime warranties go under. I'm interested really on the first part there. I would have to say that we would need to have a discussion about any car ports being put, especially on a piece of property that's underneath the library, even though it falls underneath our budget, it's, it's separate.
The intention for, for including this is, one of the, one of the big issues that we have in town is backup power.
Yeah.
And that was part of the next discussion, was, you know, going to the battery backup so we'd be able to have emergency power. The issue is, as we look at the way our, our electrical infrastructure's working and the way storms are working, we're gonna see longer and more frequent outages. Having a propane fire generator will work for a while, but if you wanted to have continuous, if we had a thirty-day outage, like another Irene, and we, they weren't able to get us power back, at least you'd be able to recharge your batteries. And, and the goal is to get enough to run basic systems and just have, the, the primary focus here is not only the, the solar generation, we're not gonna generate an incredible amount of power, but we are gonna generate a portion of it, but it will provide us long-term energy backup.
And, and all I'm saying, Chad, is that if, if the library or whoever may come in-
We're gonna have to go meet with them as well.
They may come back and say, we'd love to have a battery charging place here, or whatever, but why can't it be put off of the roof instead of having that other thing? I mean, that's, you know, I mean, why, I mean, obviously, you know, in California, where they just found out with all the fires, it's just because you have solar panel doesn't mean that when the power is automatically shut off, that you have electric, because you need the battery backup when the electric's out, because all that thing does is make your meter go backwards without the battery.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And to that end, we have become the biggest installer of the Tesla Power Wall, and we're now moving into proposing power packs, such as the bigger commercial-scale ones here in Vermont. So we have a great relationship with Tesla and Green Mountain Power's program. So for a municipality, for the size of the power bills that you have, if you want to get kind of one to two days of critical systems, having two power walls, because they're stackable, would be our recommendation for the town hall. So, you know, you've got a nice space there, the utility room's pretty accessible, I went in and took a look at that. And so our quote, if you wanted to do basically two days' worth of storage, so twenty-seven kilowatt-hours of capacity, so that's two thirteen-and-a-half kilowatt-hour power wall units, like the one that's in that picture, that, that would be, all the installation for that and the equipment would be twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred. And that may be eligible for a program that Green Mountain Power has, where we could work with them to finance it in a creative way, but I haven't done that with a municipality that programs more in here in the presidency.
Ten percent loans.
So do we want to-
Motion that we look into this further? Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's where they are. I mean, I have a last question on the backup powers, so it, it puts, how long does the power actually last in the, in the, in the backup? You know, so if, if you're charging it, and it takes a day's worth of energy to charge that backup power, then there's no power going out for a year?
Yeah, so if, so let's say we put up canopies, we did the whole thing that we're proposing, and we put up a canopy at town hall, so you had generation there.
Right.
And the two power walls. So that canopy is a sixteen-point-eight kilowatt system. So in an hour and a half roughly, it could completely recharge that battery. The critical systems, from what I can tell, just modeling based on the utility bill at town hall, would need about fifteen kilowatt-hours a day. So if you just had two good hours of production, you could refill the day's work.
No, no, so my question is, is that you filled it, okay? There's no, it, it's the middle of the winter, okay? You've got this power wall charged. How long is it, how long is that, how long does it stay charged? Is that losing power over time with not being used?
Oh, no, so-
Yeah.
So give or take five percent, it'll basically hold its charge indefinitely with the building.
That's what I wanted to hear, how long it would hold its charge?
Yeah, now, if it gets really cold, or it gets really hot, it can sort of, it can essentially like, has sort of a discharge to ground, but, you know, assuming it's inside in the basement and they're- in the basement and there are extreme temperature changes, it essentially would hold ninety or ninety-five percent of its charge indefinitely.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the question I had. I have no problem, I mean, I really like the idea of the roofs. I would want to get feedback from, you know, people about replace, you know, doing the.
Well, no, and we move to this next phase, if we're, since we're going to move forward, then I would then make an appointment to go to the, the library board and actually do a presentation there.
The library board, and there were other people that may not use the library, like get it out there, how people feel.
Oh, no, yeah, we'll, we'll have a, we'll do a public hearing, and we would do a warning and the whole thing. It's just a matter of, right now, we, we have to tighten up all the pieces and, and fill in some of the gaps and see what our options are, and make sure we have the whole picture.
Yeah, I think this board was ready to go the last time, if it could have been up on the roof.
I agree. That's why we moved in this direction, and we'll go from there.
I'd like to see us move forward with this.
I don't think we need a motion, just.
No, I basically directive to say, go ahead.
Actually adopting anything at this point.
I think that's the key for this. Thank you very much.
Are you a Vermont company? Yeah, so we're based out of Waterbury, and we started here in Vermont. We bought a, a business called Hudson Solar that was in, based out of Rhinebeck, New York. So we're now a New York and Vermont company, but we're born, born here.
Can we go back to the first slide, Chad?
Which one? Oh, gee, it was already skipping out.
The very first slide?
Yep.
Not that one? The usage. The town is using for, the golf course used that.
It's the usage one?
Yeah, that one. Why is the maintenance building at the golf course that we only run for that high?
Because of the pump system. We actually, they actually have the largest power bill of the town.
For the whole, that pump system does the whole eighteen-hall irrigation system.
It's amazing how much power they're using.
Yeah. I'm surprised that they.
It's not just the maintenance of the mowers and such, it's.
No, it's the, it's the.
It's the whole irrigation system.
Talking about electricity here.
Yeah, and that's, and they're electric pumps, and they're big.
Yeah.
And they do some draw.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great one.
Thank you.
Number eight, rental registration zoning amendment draft.
Basically, we're, we're going to, today, the only goal that I had was to basically set a process for how we're going to go through this. The select board will have to have a fifteen-day warned public hearing related to this. What I've presented to you is the, is the amendments that were approved by the planning commission on the eighth. I also have the transmittal copy that's now up on the website, which is basically all the changes incorporated into the main zoning document.
Let these folks know, because I think that's.
Yeah, anybody who wants to read the entire text, it's all on the website and listed. The, but the, 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 the amendment that they approved, which was just the actual language changes, is included in your packet. What we basically need to do is determine the process we're going to undertake to go through the review process and the public hearing process. If the goal is to move to the, to a public hearing to take input at the next meeting, we just need to pick something more than fifteen days out. I would recommend going into, between the two meetings in, in February.
We would have a meeting just for this?
Yeah, basically, we'd have a special meeting to, to do a public hearing for the, the zoning amendments, and we could pick, the, the one in between would be February eleventh, it's another Tuesday. We could do that, it's basically at the board's pleasure, but have, everybody have a chance to review it. We'll actually publicly warn the meeting so that everybody will then be looking for the documents, so they have time to, to do the review. And then we'll have the public hearing, and then the select board can decide whether and how it will act on those recommendations.
So I went to these.
Wait, no, go ahead.
I went to these planning commission hearing. Some of the planners wanted somebody to show up on the select board, so I went. Some of the folks in the audience, after the motion was approved, had some points that they wanted to point out, and I had specifically said for them to possibly get ahold of you, Chad. Did that happen?
I had not heard from anyone to, to date.
Okay, I mean, I said either get ahold of there, and then it would be held at the select board anyway, and that's why it could be brought up. So is there something that you wanted us to look at before we're?
Me?
Yeah, well, you, you.
No, no, I did have a couple concerns, but, you know, I don't know if those come up now or.
I think they're behind you too.
Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, so, so, I mean, you know, remember, you had brought up after they voted.
One with the word use versus, yeah.
So, you know, I had said at that point, meet up with, we'll have it at the select board. It's only here for us to look at, they probably, this is the first time these two have probably seen this document, but, you know, if you can get ahold of Chad, or you want to point it out or whatever, but we're going to, we're going, we're going to have a, we're going to have a, we're going to set a hearing, and that's how it's going to work. And that's what you ask.
Yeah, I mean, if you have to bring it up at the appropriate time.
Yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure that your stuff is, you know, or, or the questions are in there to all of us, while we're, while we're looking at it.
There's also other typos.
Yeah, yeah, so if you can do that. So Chad, the one thing I have on this is that the third page of this, the accessory dwelling unit, I don't think that really has anything to do with the short-term rental, whatever.
No, there's actually three zoning amendments, and when I warn it, we'll have to warn all three.
Right.
One is for the, the short-term rental, one is for the accessory dwelling unit, and the other is for the modification to zoning related to driveway permits.
Right, so what I'm saying is, is that if we can, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think there's any issue of allowing somebody to put a garage with a accessory dwelling above it for, for living in, it's just one bedroom or whatever, as long as they meet all the setbacks. I don't think we had any really conversation.
No, we just, it all has to meet the same criteria, the fifteen-day public warning, and we have to open it and, and probably vote on each section.
Right.
So we'll, we'll do that as part of the public hearing process.
Can we put this one up for the next whatever meeting? Get this, this out of the way?
This one, the accessory?
Yeah, the dwelling accessory and the.
And you want to do the, and the driveway permit? We'll just do those two?
The driveway.
Yeah, I don't, I think if we put those, those two there, we're not going to get that many people coming here to the meeting, because I don't think anyone has a concern about having a garage with a one-bedroom. I mean, right currently now, you could have a garage with a bedroom over it, but if it's detached from the building, you have to have some kind of little.
You have, they have to be connected, they have to be physically connected, and that, the question is, is taking the physical connection out of the rules.
Right, and, and going to a lot of the planning commission meetings, this is basically what the state has anyway, that it's allowing this to be done.
Yeah, we basically had a rule that, that said you couldn't have it separate, this is this, what the state allows as a, as a minimum, maximum, sorry.
Right. It's only for a one-bedroom.
Right.
You know?
It's one-bedroom, not to exceed thirty percent of the.
Well, they, they knocked it down here, not, an accessory dwelling unit of nine hundred square feet or greater shall continue, whatever, ZBA, whatever. You know, the accessory dwelling unit does not exceed thirty percent.
That says it needs a separate.
Or greater.
Right.
It's conditional use permit.
Right, because basically, if you had a ten thousand square foot house, you could have a three thousand square foot.
Five thousand square foot garage, one bedroom.
So you have to go through a conditional use permit for that.
Right, right. So if we can just put this on to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll do that and the driveway permit, and then we'll do the other.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way we'll give everybody a good enough warning for the other one, that we can get at least.
Do I have fifteen days between now and the next meeting? I think so. I got to make sure, because I have to warn a fifteen days, because it still is, has to meet the same criteria.
Well, the next meeting that meets fifteen days.
The fourth.
The fourth, and we're at the twenty-first, so that's ten, that's, I don't know, it's close.
Well, whatever, the next meeting that meets, let's take care of this one first, but let's put out the two warnings and just break it up separately, that this one is on this date, and this one here will be the one after.
Well, what I'm saying is, if it doesn't meet the fifteen days, I may have to.
This one goes, so, so this goes two meetings out, okay? Two meetings, two meetings.
Well, we were going to do a special meeting for the registration program.
Okay.
And what I'm saying is, is if that's the one between the two meetings, then I could put that first on the agenda, we can knock those two off and then talk about the one.
I'd just rather not.
You'd rather, okay, that's fine.
I don't want to get this involved into that.
That's fine.
Do a meeting just for the short.
Is it, do I have fifteen days? I didn't think so.
It's fourteen.
Yeah, so it's going to have to go to the second meeting, which will be after the registration program meeting.
That, that's fine, just keep it separate.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do that separately. Go ahead, Roger.
So how are we going to handle the people who have already put up these accessory units that aren't continuous to their house? There's many out there that are illegal currently.
Again, it's a zoning violation, and they will have to be reviewed. I mean, it is, I mean, I'm, I'm not aware of a lot of that, but I don't know. I know.
We know they're out there.
Well, I'm sure there are. I, the issue is, a lot of people just put like a little covered walkway, and they just connect a little roof, and that counts.
That's the best way to get around that.
Right.
What about if there is no such?
Then there, it's a zoning violation.
So what I think was going to happen is, is that the people are going to have to come in, and they're going to have to file the paperwork saying, and it's already, the structure is already up, we're going to allow it, it's going to be like, you know, federal tax, you know, come on in and make up to us now, and we'll let you go.
Where are you going to let that go, that they had illegal spaces on their property?
I think that would come up to the planning or the zoning.
The zoning administrator, if he's aware of them, should be issuing a letter saying, don't use it because you're not in violation, but I don't know if we're aware of specific ones at this time. That I don't know.
And you're saying you know? No, I, I'm just looking at the look on your face. I'm looking at the look on your face.
I think we all know a couple.
Right.
So I mean, we're just, they're just going to get away with it then, basically?
Well, I don't know if they're going to get away with it, Roger, because the one thing is, is that it has to see, they, they may have this accessory building, garage or whatever, that doesn't meet the setbacks, okay, so.
It doesn't meet the criteria.
Doesn't meet the criteria, so.
Or has the wastewater capacity.
But that, and then the wastewater, so there's a whole bunch of stuff. So this is putting, once again, this is putting something in place, saying that we now recognize this, we're putting it into place, and now, if you know someone, then it's going to be, hey, you know, where's the permit for that? And if they were going off of, you know, that, let's say they built an accessory unit, and there's two bedrooms up there, this only says one, you know? Let's say their septic system doesn't meet it or whatever, and this says it has to, you know? You can't just be putting up buildings and getting, well, I guess you can, but.
It's what we've been doing.
Yeah, but, you know, there's a lot of people that do it by the books too, Rog.
I'm sure.
So, but what we need to do is to put something in place, so that if it's not in place and it's not in the zoning, it's not enforceable. You can say you shouldn't be doing that, but if you don't have some type of a ordinance or zoning, if you put the right word, in place, you can't go and say, well, zoning says you can't do that, because it's not them.
We currently do have a zoning law that says you can't do that, but they've already done this, so.
So what would happen, Chad, if I, if I built a garage disconnected from my house, and I had a one-bedroom up there, and somebody came in and said, hey, Jim has one?
Basically, the, if somebody reports it, the, the, and this is part of the issue, I mean, like, the, the listers don't look for that when they do evaluations and things like that. Somebody, with a lot of this stuff, it has to be reported, and once it's reported, the, typically, the zoning administrator would call and try to say, hey, you know, are you, you know, you're not allowed to do that, you know, are you aware of that? And if the answer, and they just said, well, we're, we've been doing it for years, we're going to continue to do it, they would get issued a, a notice of violation for zoning, which is the two hundred dollars a day if they don't do it. Since, since the, since the letter is, from the time the letter is mailed.
From the notice.
Thirty days after the notice.
You can't go backwards.
Right, there's a certain amount of days after.
Well, we give them a certain number of days to comply, and starting on the end of that compliance requirement, then the two hundred dollars a day starts.
So by passing this here, I could see that we might be able, and to get the listers on board too, to start looking at stuff like this, and then giving notifications to these people that they need to come in to call.
Right.
To, to get, to get caught up, otherwise they're going to get this.
Right.
And, not too far down the road, we're going, we'll probably have to do a town-wide reassessment.
Well, there, there's.
Which opens every structure in town to being revisited by the listers.
Yeah, but we just did one like, what, eight, nine years ago?
Well, I'm talking in terms of the CLA and that type of thing.
Yeah, but we did that like eight, nine years ago, and they didn't get those houses.
Well, now, now we need to make a point that.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we need to say that, and that's what it is.
And we need to have it in writing, in the zoning ordinance, to back them up.
This is a little bit more tougher than the one we currently have, I believe. This is setting the square footage, this is setting what you have to do, and, you know, so I think it's a little, I think it gives the zoning administrator a little more, you know, oomph to, to go out there and do something. So, all right, so that's what we're going to do?
Yes.
Do we?
So, in, would you like the, the February eleventh date for the, the Tuesday in between the two meetings in February? See if that's, see if that's a school issue, for a special meeting for the rental registration program?
Well, that's pretty much the soonest we can do it.
Yes, I mean, I, that's the, well, you, you don't have to do it on a Tuesday night, it can be any night.
Oh, no, but.
I just thought.
People are used to the fact that we meet on Tuesdays.
Tuesday, yeah, I think the eleventh would work, but assuming Jim doesn't have a school board.
I'm out of town that week.
He's out of town that week, so. No, my school board meeting's on Mondays, that's what's great, we move to Tuesdays, and they're on Mondays.
Okay.
So, but, but Chuck is out.
Oh, for the eleventh?
Yeah, that whole week, I'm, I'm out of town.
So when are we talking about doing the accessory dwelling?
Well, the, if we, we can't do.
On the eighteenth?
We'd have to do it on the eighteenth.
Right, and then the twenty-fifth is going to be George Washington, you know, President's Week, right?
That's not going to be a good time.
No.
I mean, we could just go, if you have the eighteenth, you could go to twentieth on Thursday and have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're after town meeting day.
Personally, I'd rather not put this off that long. If we meet on a different night, I would rather do that than wait till March.
Well, the, the first week, we'd have to do it the week of the eighteenth, because the first week we could do it is the week he's away.
Okay.
So it's the next week is the, is our second meeting of February, which is the eighteenth.
I don't have a problem coming in on the twenty-fifth of February, I'm just saying that it's month of the, you know what, it's going to give a lot of people that are long-term, you know, seasonal rentals or whatever, they, they may be up in their condos for that week, they may be up in their houses or whatever, that they block out the week or whatever for President's Week.
If we have it on the twenty-fifth, that'll work fine, we'll do the eighteenth with the two other things, and the twenty-fifth for rental.
You're in the twenty-fifth?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, do you see that, like usually, Steve, in the condos that, that you were up at?
No, we're okay.
No, but I mean that more of the, the users are in for the President's Week, you rent it out.
Where I am.
Rentful week.
Yeah.
I don't think any owners are gonna be up that we have.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, three quarters of the units at Edgemont are owned and not rented.
Okay.
And a lot of people, like this last weekend, a lot of owners just didn't come up because they knew it'd be busy.
And there's crowds on the mountain, owners don't come.
Right, and yet.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
Ten different units showed up on Monday night.
I just wanted to make sure that we do this and there's. We give the public a chance to, to show up and.
It's important that they do.
You know?
No, I'm, I'm okay with the 25th, I just don't wanna go all the way on the other side of town meeting.
Okay.
And with the notification for the day we do it, are we, we'll need to put out an agenda of what we'll be talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be a meeting, a warning, a public hearing, a public meeting warning.
Right.
So, it'll be an official.
The agenda will actually be in the Mountain Times and everything, and what we're gonna be.
But I'm just saying, if we're talking about, you know, wording in here, questions that could be sent to us in the meantime, whether, you know, what would be a potential fee for registration, I'm just saying, we need, I just want people to know what the meeting is for.
Right.
And that it's not just one specific thing.
Right.
So the people know, pretty much, we're looking to cover the whole thing, as far as the rental agreement. And that can be in the warning, we don't have to put that out now, but it will be in the warning for the meeting.
Yeah. I mean, like, I, I look at this, and it's just like, you know, right off the bat, and I mean, I've questioned this a lot, and, and it's actually, I think I'm being more that to, to tighten up on someone like me, not loosen up, but hotel lodge, a hotel motel or lodge consisting of a building, buildings or portion thereof kept, used, maintained, appetized, or held out to the public to provide overnight accommodations to said public for compensation, whatever, by the renting of rooms or a bed within a room. The renting of an entire dwelling unit does not constitute a lodging operation. However, such use may qualify as a short-term rental, so, so once again, what am I? And I don't mind, and, and just so you know, I don't mind, like, if I have a lease, it's a long-term lease, okay, I'm renting out the whole building, I don't mind, you know, charge me the $200, charge me the $100, charge me for whatever it is, I don't mind, I think, you know, if it's a rental property and we're gonna come out with a price, then charge everybody that's a rental property. That's my two bits, and, you know, I would fall underneath that, because I'm, I am a, I don't know how you tell me I'm no longer a lodge. Um, and I know we've.
When you're more than 30 days.
Right, you're not a short-term lodge.
But it, but it says, the renting of an entire dwelling unit does not constitute a lodging operation, however, such use may qualify as a short, may or may not, or whatever.
Depending on the short term. The state differentiates everything over 30 days into, you're just renting the whole house and it doesn't, it doesn't get pushed into the, the lodging qualifications as far as the.
I think some people would be really shocked at where I'm coming from, is I totally believe that if we go with a, we go with a fee, that anyone that is renting for more than 14 days is, you know, you might have to have certain, you know, like, certain, certain breakpoints or something like that, I mean, um.
Okay.
That's me, and that's, that's part of the discussion we'll have then, but, you know, I, I don't see a problem for me saying, I'm in business in this town, I'll pay the $200, if that's the fee.
So we have the two dates set?
Yes.
Do the two of them. Okay. All right, um, town financials for December 31?
Yeah, um, you have your financial package there, we're, from a year-to-date comparison, we're up about a million dollars in revenue, although we did bill more this year than last year, at the same time last year, so revenues are, are up a little bit, and also our expenses on the, are about a thousand dollars less at the same time last year. So we're, we're tracking, and, and there hasn't been anything out of the ordinary on any of the individual items, so, um, in, in actuality, it's kind of a boring comparative report.
Thank you for coming in, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thanks for having me.
Send your questions to Chad, so we can get them in ahead of time.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, they all got up to leave.
No, that's fine. So I, you know, I don't have a lot to report on the, on the actual accounting of the, what we're doing so far this year. From the treasurer's report side, also a little bit boring, we have started seeing some of the larger bills hitting the, the public safety building, but we're certainly within where we're supposed to be. The golf pro shops, cash is getting a little low, but tonight, we have the $250,000 operating note that we've signed each year, that the golf course did take out last year and pay in full plus, including interest last year, so we're basically just taking that out for operations for the first half of the year.
And the difference, as we know, is this year it went through the golf course, it did not go through.
The town, it did not touch the town's books.
Golf course took the money out, the golf course paid the money back.
Yeah.
Which it hasn't done for.
Plus interest.
Long time.
Thank you.
Um, and on the, on the restricted funds, basically, everything is in order as far as I can, everything that I've looked at, and I think we're, we're in a very good place. So I don't have anything out of the ordinary to report. The Killington Road Route 4 sewer fund and Alpine Drive sewer funds both have around, you know, $145,000 and $153,000. The Route 4 sewer fund still has another payment coming in, so that will improve a little bit, but we will have, we will be talking about that this spring, with how we're gonna approach that next year and how we're going to address the, the change in the, um, the ordinance, from a bond, a bond-related payback one to operation and maintenance and reserve funds. So we will be, we'll be probably starting to review that sometime in either March or April, so that we can be in place before next September.
So since LaCrece, you're here, and I love these reports. So the restricted fund report that I have, and if I go to fund number 168, which is the public safety building, okay, forget about what the auditors did for the yellow, for the, okay, forget about that. It says the receipts was the $3,650,000. And, and then it says that we've already dispersed 1 million, we already dispersed 198,998, whatever, and then that gives us whatever, all right, from down there.
33.91.
But, no, because there's the, it started off at negative 59,000, so it's, it's $59,000 higher than that, or whatever, I guess. But when I look at the treasurer's report, it says that $3,650,000 public safety building bond anticipation, not included in a restricted level, restricted, should we be changing that to the 3.3?
Can you pull, you have a note, it says note, not not.
Well, it's the note, but it's.
It says it, it's a note that it is included.
Oh, okay, I keep on thinking that's a not, I'm sorry.
It's a note that it is included.
Yeah, I keep on, but, so it's, the note is, it's included, but, so like, now when I look at, so here we go, when I look at the balance, okay, on December 31st, and I see there's 7 million, I don't know what you got there, I, I'm looking at the treasurer's report right now.
7,286.
Yeah, you wanna check this?
You want me to pull that up?
7,286. Okay, so I'm looking at that, 7,286.
Down two, there.
But when I go to 168, okay, is that three points, so, so what I would normally do is add up those numbers and see where we're at, okay? So I would say, okay, there's, there's 5,87,000 in restricted funds, there's, um.
4.6 of it is in the 5 million.
4.6 of that is into the 5 million. But when I look at this, the restricted fund sheet, we've already started spending some, so should that number be coming? That's all, I mean, it's a simple, because if I add right now 4.6, but really, that 3.6 is down to 3 point.
Right.
3.3, whatever, or 3.4. I don't know how you would do it, I mean, I was just asking.
I go so, so how the restricted fund report is.
Right.
I, NIMRIC, which is our accounting software, has these restricted funds, it shows me the fund balance, it shows me what the receipts are and what the dispersments are, and I go in to the, the system and I pull those numbers out. I'm depositing the funds, I don't have any direct involvement with the funds.
Right, yeah, it's part, yeah.
I don't have anything to do with the dispersments.
Right.
So I take everything from the software.
Right.
And I just make sure it all balances. And then I just let you know how many, you know, how much of it is in the restricted funds.
Right.
All, everything that is in, all the funds that, all the money that is in the, is in that cash balance of the 7 million.
So if we spent the full three point, let's say we spent the full $1 million, go back to the treasurer's report.
I was just going up there to look at, 958 is what we've spent.
Okay, so there's 41,000 there, right?
Yeah.
For East Mountain Road. So, we're getting dizzy. And I know what you're sa, I know what you're saying, because you have none, but let's say somebody in town that has three initials Elf, but maybe his really name is not Louis or whatever, and he comes to me and says EF, so, okay. So let's say, he comes to me and says, Jim, I'm reading the, I'm reading the, this one sheet here, right, and, and it's telling me that's five, six, seven, eight, nine, and then all of a sudden, all this, and we only, but we only have 7.2, but in reality, really, right Dean Hill Road right now, we've already spent like 900,000.
We've spent, one point, technically, of that, 1.1 million is less the three, the 4.6, you're at less 1.1 million, which makes more sense with the restricted fund balance.
That's all I'm getting at, and I don't think it has anything to do with you, because you have.
No, it's just how we're, how we're writing it.
So, so I think what happened was, when these notes came, you wanted to know specifically that those notes were included in restricted funds.
Right.
What's happening now is we're spending money out of those notes, so I think those two notes have to go away.
Right.
And all you want to know is, you have to pull restricted fund balance.
Right, yeah.
And you have to buy those numbers down.
Right.
And then you go to the restricted fund, yeah, it doesn't need to be there anymore.
And then I go to the restricted fund, and I don't.
Right.
Because.
Those will come out.
Okay, that's all, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm gonna get, I get people that come to me and they go, wow, we have, in the treasurer's report, we owe all this and blah, 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 and I'm like, we're already spending the money down.
So, I have a question about the golf restricted funds?
Yeah, that's another one.
Um, so it says 44,771, so how, how do we have, it doesn't seem like that adds up, or I'm missing something?
Well, we're, we're about 5,000 in the hole technically, right now, with what we have in the restricted fund, because our balance is 39,000.
Okay.
And you take 44 out of that as restricted, when we, when we put the money back in, we'll be back whole again on that.
Okay, so who has to put that money back in?
Well, it's, it's, it's the operating money, we, we now have gone into, the, the first half of the year is always just an expense, no revenue.
Well, it's gonna turn into what we just did with the town.
Right.
Over the course of the last few years, is that we were actually, if you looked a couple of years ago and you looked at the restricted funds, it was actually more money than what was in the, um.
The balance.
The balance. And we would always borrow money or whatever.
And, and the hope is.
And that's why now, what we've done in the last three years, even the previous board between you and I, started to do, or whatever, is build it up, so we have more of, so now, if you look into ours, it should be that all the funds are there. I mean, a restricted fund, truthfully, should be a restricted fund.
Right.
You know, but, they give you leeway.
And technically.
So the 250 that we're gonna be approving a little bit later on, all of a sudden the 250 there, and then it's like, voila, we have the 44,000.
Well, if you, if you add the 53 to the 39, we technically are at zero, because we have 44,000 there, we just have it in two accounts.
Well, it's a little short.
Yeah. Because then there's, so the, so, so the.
A hundred dollar short.
Wow.
But, um, yeah, then, and that's just the nature, the, the goal right now, and, and the reason we ran the capital where we did this year for the golf, is to make the payments that we make, because right now, we're projecting that they're gonna make 75,000 or 80,000 this year, and that would then be able to maintain this balance going forward, we wouldn't have this issue anymore.
So, so what did the golf course make last year, net?
It's eight? Could I look that?
Well, we're, we're, we're switching into the golf, yeah, stuff, so.
Yeah.
Um, comparative budget.
So basically, I'm showing the actual for FY19 is 1,031,595, that's the revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And then if I go to the expenses, I'm showing 984,545.
It's a 47,000 difference.
Yeah, so the golf course made, yeah, so you have it right down there, 47,049.
So we, and from a cash perspective, we, we were like, running negative for years, so we're kinda just breaking, we're about at zero and right about there, so hopefully we'll start to see it turn the other way.
The actual in 2018 was, was cutting this year, was a negative 203,000.
So, am I wrong to think that that should show up on this treasurer's report? If we started out with 15,4, you have about 20.
Right.
Then in the end, if we made 47,000, we should have 67,000?
Yeah, but, so, so now she's giving, you know, I, I see what you're saying, December, this is at the end of December 31st, but, um.
A lot of these fund balances get adjusted by the auditor for depreciation and fund stuff like that, so the NIMRIC thing doesn't always, and, and the timing of things, NIMRIC and the cash are not always in line.
Yeah, I'm only reporting on.
She's reporting cash, it's not the, that's not the, the accounting, it's strictly the cash number. Because we're up, what, 24,000 in that one, and 6,000 in the other, so we're up about 25,000 as far as cash goes.
So what I'm seeing here, though, is that currently, right now, we, we're saying that we have 39,000, right? So we have it.
39 plus 5.
Plus the 53, 24.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, comes out to.
44, 5, or 6, right?
It's 44, 6, yeah.
Yeah, 44, 6, and then you come over here, we're like 400 off, 449.
And there was a deposit, and that was made on the 31st.
That didn't hit.
400, and I.
All those.
That, it's pretty off, like 100.
Right, because, yeah.
Chad didn't tell us. Well, I did not tell you. It was, the, the actual money went in the bank on like the 2nd or 3rd, but it actually hit the, our accounting system on the 31st.
Yeah, but, so, so, but basically what he's saying too, is this, you're, you're showing the, the revenue, or whatever, and you're saying that there's 20 that was in the beginning of the year.
Right, so if I started with 20. I've, I've looked for this, but. Right. It's been very difficult to make that work, I've been looking for that number, why it's not exactly the same, and I'm trying to, to find that, but there's a, there is a slight difference in what NIMRIC is reporting for profit, for net, net profit, and what the bank is showing, and I'm trying to find where that is, and it's been a real needle in the haystack to this point. But, we will get there.
All right, so NIMRIC shows a profit of like about 47?
Right, but it's not, it's, technically, it's a little less than that, and I can't find out why. And, and I, it has not been obvious to me. And we've been, we've been digging.
So the pro shop, if I don't take the balance on January 1 from the previous year funds or whatever, okay, the pro shop number has come out to 1.672304 in, in the revenue, okay? So to get to this 1,687,479, I have to add in the 15,096 to get to that. And then we're showing dispersments, so all the dispersments are okay, which is showing that at the end is 39,000, so, so once again, so, so we're counting in, sort of like into revenue, that 15,000 in the beginning.
Yeah.
That's in the revenue.
Carried over from the year before.
That's carried over from the year before. It gives you this, then we're subtracting these dispersments, the operating loan, the bond and loan payment, the transfer to the restaurant we're doing, okay, which then, when you do all that, we got 39,373, then we come down to the restaurant, we started with 4367, we had 161 whatever in, in receipts, and then transferred from the pro shop came over to here, it gave us 189, and then the dispersments, we had 102,000 and, to go over, which gave us like 87,000, and then we just, then, then at the end of the year, to keep them going, we just, we, we transferred 81,000 up to here.
That's the pay, that's, that was for the pay, the 250.
And that's the transfer over here, okay? So that gives you the 5,000 here, so that gives you that, so once again, that will give will give you that forty-four, whatever, and then the, then the four hundred, the four hundred, I mean, we're, we're short somehow, four hundred dollars.
You have to think of my treasurer's report as a checkbook.
Right, right. So you put the four hundred in?
So, yeah, so when I posted the four hundred, because it was, it was a December revenue, and I had to do the transfer from the clearing account, um, as of December thirty-first, that you would have accurate numbers, because the golf course has better than their numbers. So, but that was after my treasurer's report was printed.
Right.
So, um, so I knew that the number was gonna be off, that, that amount. But this basically is like a checkbook. If, you have your beginning balance, you have your, your, uh...
So a twenty...
Receipts.
Yeah.
And then you have the dispersments, and then you have an ending balance. And the next year, it starts with that, that ending balance, because the next year. It's, um, so, I don't know how NIMRIC calculates the profit of the golf course and what it takes into account, but it does that. I'm only recording on, you know, where did the bank balance start? At the beginning of the year? What came into the bank? What left the bank? And anything else, you know, any other transfers in between? So that, that balance of December for both accounts matches what the bank balance is, taking into account all the checks that were written, all outstanding checks, any outstanding deposits.
So, so we're only, we're twenty-three hundred and fifty dollars off, that, that's it. But what, what could have happened, and it happens every single year, is, is that the balance on January four, in your checking account, when you call and you check, is fifteen thousand, are you saying, is that, you count every check you wrote, or what's actually in the bank?
Every check that was processed through the work...
Right.
Gets taken off as a dispersment.
Right, right. And there might be something that was wrote up on January, but it was dated December thirty-first. You may not have seen it until a few days after, but it had a December thirty-first.
And it could be the same thing that happened this year, where a deposit came in.
Right.
Same thing. So I'm thinking, I'm hoping to adjust my December report, so that going forward, I can, it'll be, you know, correct.
I think you're gonna hit it all the time. I think it's gonna happen all, you know?
I know.
Because I think what's gonna, what happens is, is that, you know, we get the warrants to sign, and the warrants are actually dated for, let's say, December thirtieth. We come in, we sign it, but you...
Those, those checks are, if they, in AP, they have it, uh, December thirtieth dated.
Yeah, you have it.
It, it is in NIMRIC, and those checks are there.
Okay.
The only thing that would affect it not being there is if the transfer was not made. There are occasions when the, the transfer doesn't happen, and then, you know, we do have a glitch that is very uncommon.
Yeah.
Happens very often.
Okay.
One other question, so as far as season passes go, like, how are they recognizing that revenue, or are we recognizing it all at once, as soon as it's paid? Because they were pre-selling...
Two years.
Passes for next year, at the end of this year.
They were also talking about breaking it out over the course of the time they were there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, how that's being accounted for, since I know they sold passes for next year. Is that included in this year's money, or, or not?
Any sale you see, you put in the revenue. So that goes back to that where we, and that's not you, this is the way the golf course is being run.
Right, and it's, and at the end of the month, David gives me what, the ZI report, which basically tells me, uh, all the funds that they brought in, the money they brought in, and then he tells me which accounts that the money is to be put in.
Right.
And then I take that money, and I make that transfer in NIMRIC, and apply that to those funds from, from the clearing account. It basically, it, it gets deposited in the checking, and it goes into this holding account, until the end of the month, when I know which accounts all that money is dispersed to.
Okay, so we shouldn't expect to see that then, next year?
No. But the, the thing is, is you probably will. Okay, and the reason is, because we've made the change to, we're switching this to a fiscal year.
Right.
That the year, this, this end of the twelve months, you're gonna do six months, and when we do the audit and the completion at June thirtieth, it will have the eighteen months within, so it'll actually be all part of the one big grouping. So, in this particular case, it probably will show, as part, well, will show as part of the eighteen months.
And if they go from July one to July, uh, July thirty-first the next year, those pre-sold passes should go into that particular budget.
It's gonna end up looking like the rec department.
Well, because we're moving it to get it in the same, the same timeframe as the, the budget that we're working on.
And, and any season passes that are sold in April, May...
I guess it really doesn't matter, as long as you don't, don't count it.
Any passes that are sold in April, May, and June of this upcoming year is gonna go to the six month, is what you're saying.
Yep, yep.
And then, and then anything in July...
Will be in the next year, next.
It's gonna take a little accounting to sort it out.
And then the following year, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be like the rec department, where they...
Right.
Where they get.
They get half, yeah, the, half of their summer is, is split into the year before.
So, yeah.
I just, just wanted to be clear, and clear for myself.
I mean, I just want, I mean, the, the part about selling, the, the selling, selling the season passes for the following year, you know, and then they counted it into this year's revenue, but then...
Yeah, that's...
As long as they're taking into account that when they're giving us their revenue for next year, that they're not gonna say, well, some of it was recognized last year.
Right, you can't do that.
You know, hopefully, they're not doing that.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta hold them to the, to the...
So, and on that note, we need a resolution to sign the current expense note?
Do you need, uh, most, do you need a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions? Hopefully not.
All in favor of accepting the treasurer's report of, uh...
December.
December thirty-first? Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan for the golf course, operating.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Did we just do the golf course financials?
Yeah, we basically are done.
We did all those.
We did that, we talked about the net prop, the net gain at the year, we talked about all the different numbers, so I don't have anything else to say unless you have more questions.
Not on the golf course. So, general fund?
General fund, uh, you have a budget here, um, basically, from a revenue and expense budget, this is the same budget I presented in December, and then again, last time, um, but I do have some, uh, some news, as we are very close to funding the, the bonds that we got, and I did get a, an estimated, uh, debt service schedule from the bond company today, and, you know, I know everybody will be very disappointed to know, we did reduce the amount of payments that we had the budget, so we're now down to a forty-seven point three six, or about an eight cent, or a point, point eight cents increase over last year. We've actually dropped one point one from what was, we were discussing at the last meeting, so, um, in general, the budget is, is come down a little bit from an expense side, and we are definitely within line of where we were last year, and all I would like, we, we have, we will be having a special meeting, um, sometime, like, the twenty-eighth, and a, just a day one for a quick, where we actually have to do the warning. But if I could get a motion, unless you have any questions about the budget, we haven't really talked about any more changes, uh, but if I can get a motion to approve this, and I can finalize the warning, I did attach a warning based on this budget, a draft warning, so that you could look through that, um, if you, see if you had any questions, or...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I, I didn't see anything else that we haven't already talked about.
I just, I, you know, one question I have is, is that when we did this last year, we were talking about building the fund back up.
Right.
Can you just go where we're, you know, where we're at on, you know, in this budget, what is it showing?
Well, the budget, the budget itself doesn't plan for, we did not put money in to fund the budget. I mean, to fund that, you know, typically, we go under budget a little bit here and there, and, and this past year, we had a very good year, um, primarily because, like, options tax and things like that did well, and we also collected a lot of taxes. I expect to have, the current year we're in, do very well. You know, I don't, I don't have any predicted amount of money, like, we didn't say we're gonna put fifty thousand dollars into the reserve fund in this, at this point. This was basically all of our payments, all of our capital funding, restricted funds, and maintaining the same process, where we typically determine how much money we're gonna carry over from the year before's budget, based on, on how we turn out for that year. So I did not put any, like I said, any specific amount of money in for a reserve fund. If you would like to add fifty thousand, then I wanna know that they're seventy-five.
I guess where I'm coming from, I thought that the way, and maybe I'm wrong, that the way we were going to reduce our borrowing was because of certain...
Was to build that up.
To build that up.
Well, and we are.
And that we're going to, so...
We are building it up.
But we made certain moves, like, we bor, so that's all I'm asking, like, we borrowed money, that, one of the, one of the articles, like...
Five hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but then we got hit with that...
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven, so I, it has nothing to do with this, it has more to say, I, I would just like to see something showing me, that if someone, you know, we built...
The goal is, is when we have the auditor come in, uh, this July, we're creating a line item on the restricted fund that will show what that reserve fund balance is.
Right.
Um, I don't wanna predict it right now, because there's always enough changes to our fund balance, but we're gonna basically have a fund balance line item after the end of this year, um, to be able to follow that. So we had a net gain, we were running around between five and six hundred thousand dollars, um, at the end of last year, and we have, we're gonna be gaining another four hundred thou, we're gonna be, I think we're gonna be like, nine hundred thousand dollars at the end of this year with a reserve.
So, so what I'm learning at another board that I'm on, do we actually have the, we're, we're working on the twenty-one budget, correct?
That's correct.
Do we actually have the audit done for nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
Nineteen's, actually nineteen's budget, you, if you look in the restricted funds, all of those adjustments have been made.
That's all I wanna make sure, is that we have it done. Okay, and because when I read article number three, it's telling me that which in estimated hundred and twenty thousand shall be applied from the two thousand and nineteen general fund balance.
Correct.
And that was audited, and that's all, okay.
Correct.
That's all I wanna make sure.
Yep, no, we're good to go.
That's my one question. So, my motion...
Actually, I can show you...
You know? And we really weren't planning on building any of those extra reserves until the twenty anyway, so that's why it may not...
Case anybody's bored, there's the audit.
That's what I wanna make sure. Everybody see that? Hey, put the camera on that thing. Put the first page. All right?
There it is, audited, audited financial statements, June thirty, two thousand and nineteen.
All right.
And I just have one, there's one minor question I'm trying to get, I gotta get it adjusted before we finalize it.
Yeah.
So we're, we'll, we'll have that here probably in another couple of weeks.
Can you, um, restate your motion, because we kinda talked about it in the middle?
My motion was to approve the warning to go forward for the public information hearing, March second, as proposed with the budget and everything else on it.
Okay. Just 'cause the question of building up the reserve came in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just didn't want it to be...
So just to be clear, it, it's, it's, the, the motion is for the warning for articles one, two, three, and four, as stated.
Okay. Do you have any, think further? All those in favor of approving the warning for the public information hearing, please say aye?
Aye.
Could you approve the general fund budget?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
I think I made the motion when I said yes. And then also the treasurer's report.
Yeah, we just covered a lot of different things at the same time. So the Green Mountain, okay, we, no, go ahead, you can...
We have the, we have the budget that was provided by Brown, now in, entered into NIMRIC, and, and we've included in the spreadsheet, and basically, you're looking at two columns. Um, one says budget fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, which is the six-month budget, um, and then the twelve-month budget is the one that's listed as fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So if we just go to the back sheet, we talk about the bottom numbers, which was in the six-month budget, where we're gonna show the hundred and fifty thousand dollar negative, and at year-end, um, an eighty-four thousand dollar profit at the end of the twelve months. So, we're, we're right on, this is the budget they presented, we, we've now just applied it to our line items, and, you know, we believe that that eighty-five thousand is what's gonna help our net fund balance in the end for the following year, so I think we're...
So this eighty, eighty-four, seven, eighty-five, um, is that as of August first in twenty-one?
Jul, it'll be at the...
July thirty-first.
It'll be June thirtieth.
Oh, June thir, I, I have the problem.
January one to June thirtieth?
January one to June thirtieth of this year will be the negative one fifty, when we, when we then have the, because the other, the other benefit of doing this is, we will now only have to do one audit. So when June thirtieth this year comes around, he's gonna audit eighteen months of the golf and twelve months of the town, and we'll get one complete audit at this point.
So...
And then the next, at the end of the, the next twelve months, we'll have the eighty-four thousand dollar positive.
So we actually have two, we start off with January, February, March, and April, right, which is, and we only have in May, really, we make a little money in June.
Just a little bit in June, so it's all, it's all expense on this.
And then most of the money we would make up would be August, September, October, but then, the reason, so now, all of a sudden, the twenty-one budget, it's August, September, October, and then we have November, December, January, March, April, May, where we're not really making much money, so that's why it's...
And it, and it was, and it was actually the reason that there was a decision made when the town moved to a fiscal year, why they didn't move the golf, because it's gonna, it's gonna have the hundred and fifty thousand dollar negative added to our bu, our, uh, audit to the first, the first time. After that, it'll be normal, but from a reporting perspective, it just has a different effect. But I, this is gonna be a, a much better process to have everything running in unison, and then, and not having what is considered, they call it, an adverse opinion, um, on your, on your audit, because you don't have everything being reported at the same time.
So on their eighteen hole green fees for twenty of a hundred and sixty thousand, and that's really only counting April, May, June, and, um, if we pulled up a previous treasurer's report...
They were, they went to...
What was the...
They're doing those on accrual.
Yeah.
They're doing them on an accrual basis, where they said they divided it up, they divided up...
That was the question that Chet said, so it, so that was the question you asked, is like, when they get the monies in. But, but this sheet doesn't go by that, that's what they go by.
The treasurer's doesn't do that, but this sheet, this is how they're budgeting. They're budgeting it on an accrual basis.
So, so that doesn't, so, they're not getting any revenue in really for season passes, January, February, and March. They start seeing stuff April, May, okay? But if they really see like, a hundred and sixty thousand, and then they, well, they're accruing it because they're year-end, so then they're, they're actually taking that all in at that year then.
Correct.
Okay, so that answers that. Okay. And then the next, the six hundred and one thousand is because it's gonna be July, August, whoever buys, you know, I guess there are some season passes, but then the following year, it's the whole April, May, and June, March, April, May, and June.
Right.
Okay.
So, just a motion to approve that, this is basic, this is Brown's budget that they presented at the beginning of December, just in our system. And we'll put that in the, in the book.
I'll make the motion to approve the Green Mountain National Golf Course FY twenty budget and FY twenty-one.
Okay, can we designate that one's a six-month budget, and one's a twelve?
Yeah, well, well, uh, well, I'll identify this better, so that it's easier to read.
So that we're clear with it?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of Jim's motion to accept the Green Mountain, actually, two budgets, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, I have a question on the golf course, that's just something that was brought to me. Do you have the specific dates of a JGA? It was asked because someone volunteers, but they're thinking it might be away.
Twenty-second or twenty-third, it's right around there, I, I can get you that, I had, I saw them.
I'll just, I'll give you a call tomorrow, or something like that, okay? Now, with someone that volunteers every year, but when I told them we moved it to June, they said, oh, we go away in June. I said, I don't think we're gonna move the tournament, because you go away. Okay, uh, managers' report.
Uh, public safety building update, um, right now, we are finally out of the ground, basically, and, and all of the delays and weather issues and ledge are behind us. Right now, we are anticipating structural steel to start on Monday. The following Monday or Tuesday, they're supposed to start the wood framing with everything to be, uh, vertical by like, the second week of March, um, and they will be enclosing, so sometime in March, we'll be getting enclosed. So right, and we're, right now, the schedule is slid a couple of weeks, we're right now in August for a completion date, um, but I think we're finally past all the unknowns, we've had several of those, uh, between the ledge, the, the winter conditions that the state put us in by delaying the permit six months, um, and a multitude of other little items. Budget-wise, we are, we are close, we just got the final ledge numbers, we're evaluating those, that pushed us probably a little beyond our contingency, but we still have some contingency on the contractor side, so we're evaluating all of that, and we'll be making a report shortly as to exactly where we are right now, but as it stands, we're, we're very close to where we intended to be, but we're not, we might be a little off, but we'll, we'll get there and we'll let you know.
And, um, one of the things Jett and I had talked about when we were looking at this is how we're gonna deal with whether we land swap or sell the old firehouse when the new one is done.
That's the contracts anyway, right.
Well, I'm just saying, if we sell it, it goes towards this.
Right.
If we land swap it, we don't have dollars to put
Right, so when we worked on, when we worked on, and I don't even know what the dollar amount was anymore on, on this building, or whatever, I mean, we keep on saying, we're in budget, we're in budget, we're in budget.
Yep.
And when the discussion came up last year about the firehouse, I specifically, keep it out, because we don't know what's gonna, you keep that out of there, and then if we get a dollar amount or a land swap, then
And that
Whatever.
That wouldn't happen till after this is complete anyway.
Right, and we said that, that's, that, that's the way it was, so, um, as long as I can keep on saying for right now that we're in our budget, then we're in our budget.
But we are close.
We're, yeah, we're ledge, we're skating on the edge.
No, no. If it changes, if, if you go over, you'll, you'll let us know.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, do you have other department updates?
Well, I have, uh, three, three things under the manager's report, one is the, um, commitment letters we need for the bonds, um, basically, just a motion to approve those, just the three bonds, I have three areas for the select board to sign.
What's the first bond for?
The, the, I don't know what order they're in. Um, the first one
Doesn't it say on the thing we have to sign?
Uh, not on that sheet.
Thanks, Lucretia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all per the attached exhibit at the back of all these. So
See that
It's actually, it, it talks about the total of 6.3 million, which is the 1 million, the 558, 588, and the, and the, uh, 4.775.
So 1.1 is for the road?
The 1, 1 million dollars for the road.
Right.
588,000 for FEMA.
Right.
And 4,007,75 for the public safety building.
Which were all approved at the vote.
Were all approved at the vote, and
And they're all the same numbers.
That's correct.
So moved.
And then we just need to see, get in the chairs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a correspondence here from the town of Mendon, um, just, this is just an FYI, there's a cell tower proposed on the hill behind their, their town office, I guess, looking for a revenue source, and also that they are going through a town-wide reappraisal.
So, so the property that we pay taxes on may go up.
Yes.
Um, have we ever been reimbursed yet for the plowing over at, um, Robinwood that we have an agreement with them?
I'm expecting that, I hope shortly.
Tell them that.
We will let, we will let them know. And the final item
I mean, how much did they owe us on the plowing?
4,000.
And how much is the taxes?
Right.
Taxes total are, it's only like, what, 1,800 a
Something like that.
And there's only two payments over there, I think?
Yep.
So I think we're even. Why do we keep sending, I mean, nothing for nothing, if they owe us 4 grand, why do we send them money?
We will, we will take care of that. Um, I also have a certificate for no appeal or suit pending from the listers, and, which states that we hereby certify that on this date, there are not any appeals pending from action of the listers, nor suits pending, to recover taxes paid under protest relating to the April 1st, 2019 grant list. So this is last April 1st, and they're just basically certifying
So they cleaned everything up, anyone that came in.
Yeah, we, we're all, there's nothing outstanding at this point, so it's a certification for you guys to sign.
Is it true?
They're saying it is.
I'm gonna back myself up on that one, I said, wait, wait. What was the thing I looked at in your office that I was, that I was gonna bring tonight, then I ended up coming straight from work? I'll bring it by the
Oh, it was a, we had a notification from the US Census Bureau, um, asking, you know, do we wanna participate in the certification of our boundaries?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think they have changed, I will check with Lucretia, see if we've done that, but I don't think there's anything special we need to do. Basically, they wanna make sure that we're not claiming there's any boundary changes or things of that nature to the town.
And, um, I think I can sign it for the board, and if not, we'll let you know that you have to go by and sign it.
Right.
Make a motion to allow the chair to sign it.
Yep.
What happened with the public safety building, does go over? We'll be back talking to you.
Well, we, the issue, the issue that we put on the ballot was the 4,0775. When you read the warning, and, and the way it's typically done, if we're off by 50,000, we can use reserve funds, or we can go do our own paving, or we can go do
It says in the warning that
You know, we, we, we had the option, you know, it, it's never perfect, the, the ledge came in right around 200,000, um, that was something that wasn't anticipated, obviously. Um, so we had about 250,000 worth of contingency, so with a couple of the other things, we're, we're right on the edge. So that, we're just trying to work out those numbers, and then basically, depending on the scope of what we have to do, I, we don't have to borrow any more money, the question is, how do we wanna address it?
Right.
You know, the goal is, is, you know, and, and, yeah, between
We could leave the roof off and ruin the rest of the building if we're 50, 60 grand older. Which I would think would be a ridiculous thing to do, right, Paul?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so we might as well somehow try to find the money to do it. Pauline?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm starting to think like you, right?
Where do we consider, what do we consider reasonable overrun?
Well, I mean, I think if, I don't, I, there's no such thing as a reasonable overrun, the issue is, is if we're 1% or 2%, we can make a decision how we wanna deal with it. And the other, the other question becomes, we do have offers, and whether or not we wanna entertain that for the other building that's being donated to us of over 200,000 dollars, you know, and that was one of the things, we always kept that in the back pocket, saying, well, that's one of our contingencies, that rather than do a land swap, we can sell the building.
I would think in my mind, if we're 3, 4, 5, if, if we're 300,000 dollars or more, then there was something totally wrong with, and I would be sitting here saying, we need to go back and talk to the, to, to the architect and everything else.
Right.
But if we're in that 50,000, 100,000 range, then I would say, that's reasonable. If, if it comes in at a million dollars, then that's not, I think everybody at this table will say
Yeah, absolutely.
There was something wrong with it.
It's reasonable.
And I think that's what your question was, all right?
Yeah, no, I mean, the issue, right now, right now, we, we know things came in a little higher than budget, when they came in and bidding, the state held us up, that cost us around 90 grand, um, just because of winter conditions, we're now paying for, and, you know, but like, well, then put it off till the spring, well, it turned out it was gonna cost us more if we couldn't guarantee the pricing on the equipment, that, by delaying it. So, you know, between that and the ledge, those two things
I don't think Rod is asking that, he's asking what's a, and if this thing is 3, 4, 500,000 or more over